We're a little bit after seven. I apologize for the delay. We'd like to go ahead and get started. Let's stand and call to order this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on Mount Aerie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. I've already had no less than three council members say, "What do we have to do to have this kind of turnout at one of our regular town council meetings?" So, thanks so much for your interest and thanks for being here tonight. We're going to try to rearrange some of the agenda to accommodate some of you who are here, so you don't have such a late evening. But we'll start with approval of the minutes. Commission members, have you had a chance to look at at these? I looked them over. They looked very, very tight and very good in my mind. Anybody else also had a chance to review?
Yeah, I did not.
I didn't see anything significant.
Then unless there's some reason otherwise, I would move that we go ahead and accept these minutes from both the January and the February meetings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Jennifer is second. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? No, aye passes unanimously. Okay. So, we still have, Heather, we still have March and April?
Well, remember, March was canceled.
March was canceled.
And then, so we have April 3rd and April 29th, and we're just going back and listening to the DVD to clarify some facts. So, we hope to have those to you shortly. So, thank you for your patience in getting those caught up.
Oh, not a problem. Not a problem. But I think everybody has probably seen the agenda, and most of you, I would suspect, are here for their rezoning discussions. This is a time in the agenda where we ask for citizen comments. If there's anything that you'd like to share with us this evening, in addition to what's on the agenda that'll be coming up, please take this opportunity to do so. Come up to the podium. Identify yourself. Is there anyone?
I don't think so.
Okay. The excitement builds. Moving ahead then to site plans, subdivision and permit review. We have some sign permit request.
We do, and we actually have a guest presenter tonight. Ms. Annalise is going to present those. And lucky for her, this is her first time presenting them, so I'm sure she'll do fine.
No, not really. Okay, our first sign is for the Mount Aerie Inn, which is located at 1401 South Main Street. The zoning is CC Commercial, and it is our restaurant. Mount Aerie Inn has originally submitted a proposed sign in April to the Planning Commission meeting. The applicant was asked to come back with a new design. The applicant proposes to install a circular wall-mounted sign, as you see above, between the two top windows. The sign measures 44 inches in diameter. There'll be externally illuminated for the proposed sign. The frontage of the building is 50 linear feet. The applicant has also proposed to install channel lettering to replace the existing wall-mounted sign. The proposed signage measures 10.5 inches in height and 10 inches or 10 foot wide, with a total of 20.5 square feet. The sign will be externally illuminated. The original Mount Aerie signage was permitted back in 2010, and it will, the original sign will be removed. Staff has worked with the applicant to achieve a balance that affects the building architecture. The applicant has requested consideration for the attached signage.
Okay.
And that is what, and it is kind of a, I'm not really sure how you would describe the green.
Do we have a representative from the property here this evening?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, I was looking for Frank. I don't know.
Okay. The current signage is actually mounted right underneath the roof, is it not?
Yes.
So, this will allow more headroom.
Yes.
Nice.
It'll be a combination of logo and lettering itself.
Yeah, I think he embodied what we'd asked for before very well. The only question I had is the sign, the medallion sign. Is there a thickness to that? Because I saw there was thickness for the channel lettering, but I wasn't sure.
Scott, that's a really good question.
They didn't say, Scott.
And the lighting, just for clarification, is there lighting existing on the roof that would sign on the medallion, show on the medallion?
The old sign, I think there's lighting that kind of reflects onto it, yeah, but not, he told me that it's externally illuminated, so I'm not.
He must be putting lights somewhere.
Remember, he talked last time about that he would have lights on the ground pointing toward it?
Right.
That's what he referenced last time.
But I'm wondering if he's going to do that at the medallion, or he's just doing it on the channel lettering.
I would think both.
I think he's thinking both.
The actual space is fairly modest relative to all of the frontage, and I noticed it a couple of times in this past week. So, I think this is very tasteful, and I appreciate how he's followed through with what we asked. Is there, the chair would welcome a motion if you're ready?
I'd like to motion acceptance of the Mount Aerie Inn signage as presented to this commission.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it passes unanimously.
Next is the Willow Glen Community. HOA has proposed a welcome sign. It is, the Willow Glen, HOA has submitted a sign permit application for the entrance of their community. The applicant proposes to install a monument-style signage at the entrance of Village Oaks Drive. The sign measures 42 inches in height and 60 inches in width, with a total of 8.5 square feet. There will be no illumination for the proposed sign. The building material size and overall sign design is comparable to the town's vision for signage. Staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the sign permit with design and building material proposed.
Where is this located?
This is actually off of East Ridgeville Boulevard. It's the Towne Home Community.
Okay.
It's in the vicinity of Village of Tall Oaks at Hope's Orient.
Okay.
And it's a fairly new subdivision.
This is where they propose to put the sign right here on the corner. And this is what they're.
Can you go back to that one location?
And the sign company has let me know that they have to keep the sign a certain distance from that electrical box, if you can see it. It has to be, by law, so far back from that. So, where they're proposing to place it is where legally they can without being too close to that box.
They've already got a bed there established.
Uh-huh. Very tasteful. Very nice.
And this shows other signs that are in different communities, such as Summit Ridge and Friendly Acres, what their signs look like.
Right.
Is that a four-way stop sign, or four-way or all-way?
No, I think it's just, I think it's straight through, except for when you turn to go down into that one section, Jen.
Okay. Are we ready? All right, then I will move that we accept the proposed sign design with the design and building materials as proposed. Is there a second? Okay, Leslie seconds. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it passes unanimously.
Okay, our next sign is the Cedarbrook Outdoor Design and Build. They are located at 207 East Ridgeville Boulevard. This is actually their office for their company now. Cedarbrook Design and Build has submitted a sign permit for application for a ground-mounted sign for the review. The applicant proposes to install a ground-mounted monument-style sign. The sign measures five foot by 72 inches wide, for a total of 30 square foot. There will be indirect illumination of the proposed sign with use of ground-mounted lighting. The frontage for the subject building is 110 linear feet. The design placement is consistent with existing signage. The building material size and overall design is comparable to the town's vision for signage. Staff recommends approval of the sign permit application with design and building as proposed.
So, a question I would have, that Bill was pointing out, the front and side elevations that were provided for the schematics differ than the actual displayed picture with the stones and the type of sign?
Do we have anyone from Cedarbrook here? I think either are acceptable. It looks like at one time they were considering.
What he explained to me was that they are going for the post type, the middle part is what they're going for for that, and where those posts will be, there are wooden.
I guess that won't be the stone columns.
No, it won't be the stone columns. It's like a wooden PVC type.
Oh, it says wood-covered posts.
Yes. It'll be more like that.
Okay.
So, it's just going to be four by fours, essentially?
Yeah. And it's like a PVC-type material, so.
Sure. Maintenance rate, okay.
Yes, very much so.
All right.
And this is existing signage that's already along that corridor, that he's pretty much keeping it in line with what's there already.
So, there's continuity?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the signage with the design and building material proposed.
All right, and I'll second the motion. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. It's all in favor.
Okay, next is the Verizon Wireless Store, and I don't know if the gentleman is here from Verizon. Guessing not. Okay, Verizon Wireless is located at 1511 Richside Drive, or Richside Road, I'm sorry. It's CC Commercial Community. Verizon Wireless has submitted a sign permit application for a front-facing wall-mounted illuminated sign and a pylon sign for review and approval by the Planning Commission. The applicant proposes to install a wall-mounted channel lettering signage. The signage measures 22 inches in height by 141 inches in width, for a total of 27.5 square feet. These will be internally illuminated for the proposed sign. The frontage of the building is 63 linear feet. The applicant also proposes to reface the existing pylon sign. The sign measures 53.2 inches in height by 13.6 inches in width, for a total of 5.59 square feet, and this will be internally illuminated as well. On August of 27th, 2012, the Planning Commission approved a channel set lettering signage as proposed for the back of the building. The proposed cabinet sign that was to be placed on the side of the building was denied, and that was where the steps go up. That's where the cabinet sign was originally, they had proposed, and that has been removed. So, the only signage right now on the building is on the back part that faces 27. The building material size and overall design is comparable with the town's vision. Staff recommends approval of the sign permit application with the design and building material proposed.
So, quick question. Hate to do numbers, but part of the sign, the right side of the sign shows 22 inches. The left side shows 19, but there's an offset of 2 inches above the E in Verizon, which makes it 24 inches? Because of the checkmark? So, is it still compliant with the maximum square footage allowed?
Do you have a calculator?
I do.
Well, we would, you would do 22 times the 96. Can you do 96/6?
96 times 22.
Well, and it would be 96, 6 and 44 divided by 12?
Try that again.
96?
Yeah.
6 and 40. Divided by 12.
Okay, plus 44.
140.
Divided by 12. Yeah, it was 11.716.
Okay, and then do the 22 divided by.
You mean 24? 24, 22 and 2. You've got the 2-inch rise.
No, then 24, 12, 2 feet, so it would be.
140, call it 140 by 22.
144 by 20, it's 24 by.
What?
141, right?
What's the linear square footage?
Your 141 divided by 12.
141 divided by 12 is 11, 11.716, and then it's 24.
So, it'll be 22.
24 times 11.716.
The frontage is 63 linear feet, so 63 square feet would be the max.
It would be 2 times 11, so it would be 22 square feet. Right?
I have no idea, Heather.
Yeah.
It's 24 inches tall by 141 inches long.
Which is 2 feet times 11 feet.
Take 3,000 divided by 144.
Well, since the applicant isn't here, would you like to save this?
And their linear footage is 63.
So, they're fine.
They're fine. They're a third of their capacity.
That's all it's asking. Great.
Yes, 140 square feet.
Is that what the existing signage, is there any other signage that we have to add into it, or is this the only signage?
One on the back.
There's one in the back that we've already dealt with. Heather, do you recall what the sign in the back?
Yeah, we have it right here.
Okay.
Sorry, everybody.
It's 38 feet, so it's a total of 65 and 1/2. So, that 2 inches would, if you're boxing it that way, wouldn't. We can work with the applicant for.
Let's work with it.
Work with us.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion. The chair moves that we accept the proposal on the second signage with the design and building material that's been proposed.
I will second.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Okay. Very good. Okay, Heather, how do you want to deal with the planner section tonight?
Okay, I'll just, Ms. Skarehart wasn't available this evening. The only information that she had to bring for us tonight, of course, was the acceptance of the Carroll County Annual Report, which she handed out at the April meeting. So, at this time, we would be looking for a motion to approve the Carroll County Annual Report as submitted for the Mount Aerie section. I trust you guys have had a chance to review that, and basically, your motion would want to include the ability for the chairman to sign a letter that I'll draft.
Okay. All right. Has everyone had a chance to take a look, or at least to skim it? I mean, I didn't see anything that gave me pause. All right. Do we need a motion to approve?
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual reports of Mount Aerie for Carroll County.
Okay, is there a second? All right, Leslie seconds. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Carroll County Annual Report. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And there is none. Frederick County?
Mr. Goodfellow, I tried to reach him today and was not able to. I did leave him a message to get in contact with me.
Okay. All right. So, that brings us to the heart of our meeting tonight, which is within the context of the master plan update, the comprehensive plan, and the section with regard to requested rezonings. Let's ask some clarification about this, so everyone understands. The consideration of the rezonings, and we started this process several months ago. Some of them date back, I think, to as late as, it goes 2009. We wanted to go ahead and step through this. We also needed to have remaining discussion and to come to a consensus, either to support or deny on the merits as we see them, based upon all the considerations that we are tasked to take a look at, because we need to get on with completing the master plan. We're the better part of two and a half years late. None of us needs to wait any longer. We need to wrap this up, and we need to move forward with it. The consideration of these rezonings is within the context of being able to move forward with that plan. It's an essential part of a very complex chapter called Chapter Four, which is the land use and zoning part. It's the heart and soul of a town master plan, okay? So, it's within that context and the developmental vision that that plan will convey that we will be discussing and looking at this tonight, okay? Now, if there's a consensus to accept, then it will be part of the presentation that will be done, hopefully, in a few weeks, in early fall, when we have public forums on the entire master plan. We're going to do it.
We're suffer first.
We're going to do it. We're going to get there. We are resolved to do so. There will be a 60-day review period for any and all residents, yourselves included, to take a look at that, okay? There will be forums, there will be discussion, the feedback that is received at that point, all of that, and all of that context will be presented to the council. There'll be closure, there'll be further consideration, okay? So, this is not a be-all, end-all tonight. It's part of an ongoing process, okay? Any questions in that regard? I just wanted to be sure that everyone understood. It's a complex process. It takes a while. It's like the law. It grinds very slowly, it grinds very finely, but it grinds, okay? For the sake of timing, and I know some of you are here for particular rezoning requests, we're going to juggle the order, okay? Heather, you want to give an idea of what that sequence might look like? Because I think it's changed two or three times today.
I know, so I need to confirm myself. Mr. Chair, was it your intent to discuss 806 Park Avenue and Wildwood Park 7 firstly, or did you want me to take care of the first three items that we had come to a consensus of in July?
It's only 7:30 now. Why don't we use those first three as a warm-up?
Okay.
Why don't we do that?
All right.
Okay.
I'm just going to let Annalise get to the appropriate slide. Thank you. Okay, the first two properties, as you can see on the overhead, are 1401 and 1403 Ridge Court. It's in the area of where Burger King and Five Guys and Mount Aerie Mattress is. It's across from the Peacock Shopping Center. The current zoning of these properties are residential existing, and the requested zoning for these two properties is limited commercial. Annalise, if you could advance. Here's a composite photo of the property south of these two properties, and that address of that property is 603 East Ridgeville Boulevard. Some of you might recognize that as the Mount Aerie Chiropractic, and Dr. Andrew Williamson has requested his property, which is now operating as a non-resident special exception, be included in the limited commercial zoning as well. At the July meeting, there was a consensus by the Planning Commission at that time to go ahead and grant, or I'm sorry, to recommend that those properties be rezoned to limited commercial. And for the sake of time, that's where I'm going to stop my comments.
Okay. I mean, we've already essentially made a decision on this.
Right.
Of the 14 or so rezoning requests, we've already reached consensus on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of them, and we'll clarify that as we step through.
Right.
The entire list tonight.
Right, and, you know, so if the Planning Commission could reaffirm their earlier decision, we can notate that for the record.
The earlier decision was a consensus to grant. We're still in agreement with that decision?
Yes.
And we are.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Is it possible to ask a quick question?
Come on up here. Identify yourself if you would. While you're getting in position to identify yourself, the current zoning on this property is residential existing, and I'm going to let our zoning administrator, Ms. Heather, speak to limited commercial, the request that has been made for the rezoning, to clarify and summarize exactly what that change would entail.
That's pretty much exactly what my question was. What do we go from and to?
All right, and your name, sir, is?
Mike Curry. I live down in Conestogur Heights.
Okay.
Hello again, Mr. Curry. How are you?
Wonderful.
Good to see you this evening. Limited commercial allows limited commercial uses. They, the largest component that can be built or constructed in a limited commercial zone is 5,000 square feet. So, it's not an overtly, you know, you can't have a plaza, even if properties were to be conveyed to one another, okay? There are hour restrictions, and if I can find my town code, I can get those for you.
So, would it be fair to say that he's looking to expand his operation?
The chiropractor?
Yes.
I couldn't, I wouldn't be able to answer that for him. Dr. Williamson is currently operating under a special exception. There is questions of whether that's vested with the property or not. I think that he may want to, at some point, increase, you know, the intensity a bit. I couldn't answer for him, Dr. Williamson. Are you here? I see him.
Is this his property, or does it belong to the homes?
I need one of these.
I know you do.
Your parking lot's already pretty full. I drive by on a regular basis, so bringing another practitioner,
Okay.
Can we comment about this, though?
Sure, yeah.
Since I live down at the bottom of that hill, everybody knows, familiar with Five Guys, the Hairpin Turns.
Right.
When Super Fresh was open, people coming out of the, the Peacock mall area, don't seem to realize that that's an actual road. They kind of think it's a parking, you know, it's part of the shopping center. The stop sign doesn't mean much to anybody coming out. They have to be real careful, and my only concern with what you were talking about is you're talking about putting two more businesses similar to yours at that corner, which could lead to problems with the traffic and safety in that area. Because we all realize, or anybody who drives down there realizes that's a blind corner, and, you know, there could be people parking in the street if we increase intensity, those concerns.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Curry, at such time as those properties would want to, would wish to operate as a commercial business, they would have to come before this body for site plan review and approval, and they would have to comply with all the standards, and at that time, if there was a traffic issue, it would be the time to address it. But.
Yes or no? Rezoning is also the time to address it.
Okay.
Do we want it to go commercial?
No argument there, but I did want to assure you that if it did, a site plan would be required.
Part of the consideration here was the adjacency of other limited commercial in the area, but you raise a very, very good point. And Heather, I'm going to ask if you would, I think Mr. Phibus, Ken Phibus is here from Streets and Roads, I think I would ask that they also take a look at this and be aware of Mr. Curtis's consideration and what he's asking for here?
Agreed.
Okay, let's do that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for raising that point. Okay, we got to go into Cross Street?
Okay, we want to go on down the line of Cross Street.
Or do you want to jump over to, yes?
Just a request, as we go through, at least three council members present tonight, as the commission goes through each individual case, if we could, if the chair would just make sure that the public has a chance to comment on each one, because again, there's three council members here as well, and I know the council's very interested to hear any comments at all. So, I just want to make sure that folks know tonight, yeah, we want to hear what people, what people think about any of these issues.
Okay. Since we just, I tell you, before we do Cross Street, I was going to say, I was going to jump down to the bottom of the list, although we have already achieved consensus to clarify, there are adjacent properties to 1401 that we've already made a decision on. The second item that we originally were going to. The second item that we originally were going to look at was 1403 Ridge Court, Hannah Hadad, third from the bottom. We've actually already dealt with that, and we've reached a consensus to grant on that. Again, just like 1401, the current zoning was residential existing. The request is for limited commercial, and we saw fit to support that request. Okay? So that's already been addressed. Is there anyone who had a concern or a question about that property? Third from the bottom, 1403 Ridge Court, adjacent to 1401, is it not? Okay? All right. Then the third one that we were gonna take a look at, Dr. Williamson's property at 603 East Ridgeville, currently residential existing. The request was for neighborhood professional. And also, at our prior meeting, we reached consensus to grant on that request. Yes? Go ahead.
I have a question.
Either one.
Okay, so 1401...
Would you identify yourself, please?
Roxanne has it, 605 Park Avenue. 1401 Ridge Court and 1403 Ridge Court are next to each other. And you're giving them limited commercial. Okay, and then you're pointing to Dr. Williamson, neighborhood professional. So you're five of them again.
That, that's, I apologize. It was actually, that was Dr. Williamson's original request. He did then request limited commercial. So this matrix didn't get updated. My apologies.
Roxanne, would you like to come up to the podium so that the tape does pick up your consideration?
That's all right. I'll just yell!
You should retract. All right, so Heather, the clarification is?
Yeah, Dr. Williamson originally submitted for neighborhood professional. During the discussion, he did ask for limited commercial.
All right, so the matrix is incorrect. It should be corrected to reflect
Right.
that the requested zoning and the zoning that we approved, or the request that we approved, is not for neighborhood professional. It too is for limited
Right.
commercial.
And just for clarification, this simply goes in the master plan draft. Tonight's recommendation is, does not change the zoning of the property. The draft is going to go out for 60-day review. There will be another public hearing opportunity, and then the town council votes on it. So this is not the end of the discussion tonight.
Okay. All right.
You got it.
Please.
Hi, I'm Ashley Roco, 2102 Scarlet Way. I'm just a little bit confused about the process here. So this is all for recommendation for the master plan. And then when these properties go from residential to commercial, can people still live there in a residence and then one day build a business? Or how does?
It all depends upon the classification.
Okay.
In this case?
How does it work?
In the case of neighborhood professional or limited commercial?
Let's take 1401 and 1403 for examples. They're currently residences, okay? If they're rezoned to limited commercial, then that residential use is non-conforming. It can continue until such time they wish to comply with their zoning. So it doesn't automatically stop the ability to use that structure as a residence.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, it is in the code that states the same thing right now? That, I mean, I'm looking at it right now. Residential use in conjunction with commercial use in accordance to RE or R2 zoning is allowable under a limited commercial.
There you go.
Okay.
It's an allowable use.
It is allowable.
So it's not even, so then it's not conforming.
Heather?
Yes.
Heather, would it help if we asked you to give us a very, a limited summary of each of the classifications that have been proposed, have been requested, either that we've already made a decision on or that we will do so tonight? So there's some clarity and understanding?
Sure, it's probably best to do it with each
Okay.
request. Because that's a lot of
All right.
Information. Yeah.
Yeah, just a summary. Okay. All right, so we've got 1401 Ridge Court. We've dealt with 1403 and 603 East Ridgeville Boulevard.
All limited commercial.
All limited commercial. Okay, do we have any more limited commercial?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay, what shall we move to next?
Do you want to hit the?
Yeah.
Want to do 207 Cross Street?
Yep.
Downtown Zone.
Okay, Downtown Zone.
Okay. 207 Cross Street, the current zoning is RE, residential existing.
And then let's do 20 Park Avenue.
The requested zoning is for the downtown zone. For, the downtown zone is a less intense form of commercial with specifically enumerated uses that are prominent along our Main Street. There are size limitations. I believe the maximum retail usage within the downtown zone, I want to say it's 15,000 square feet, but please let me verify that.
Yeah, it's 15.
Thank you. There are no hour restrictions within the downtown zone. As you can see, this property is confronted by the municipal parking lot. To the north of this property, there is a existing insurance business that is also zoned residential existing. We have not received any request for rezoning, but that would likely be one of staff's considerations after tonight's discussion. Brian and Heather Baker? Are Mr. and Mrs. Baker here? I don't see them. They are the applicants, and they have been trying to achieve zoning on this property for several years. So...
Is this correct?
In July, the Planning Commission did reach a consensus to grant that downtown zoning.
All right, Heather, when we broached this request last time, we achieved consensus
Yes, you did. Yes.
Okay, so we've, in essence, we've made a decision on this.
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay. Could we then move to the other downtown zone request that we have, which is 20 Park Avenue?
Sure, before you reaffirm?
Well, no, let's go ahead and reaffirm.
Okay.
Has anyone changed their opinion on this? Do we still have a like mind?
No.
Everyone in agreement?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, we all are. Is there any comment or any request? Any comment for anyone on this particular property?
On 207?
On 207, if so, step up and identify yourself, and let's get it in the public record.
No.
No?
207.
Okay. Then let's, let's speak to... Yeah, 20 Park Avenue.
Okay, 20 Park Avenue is not directly adjacent to...
No.
You just forward that, Anne. Thank you. And I have to apologize to the applicant, Ms. Cecilia Long. This is a dated picture, and she has been working steadfastly at improving this property. If you've driven by it, you'll notice the marked difference. So I wanted to apologize. I did not have an updated photo. Mrs. Long has requested this property also be included in the downtown zone. The Planning Commission received comments from the surrounding community that there was a concern that the downtown zone be extended up on this side of the street. The property, the small attorney's office to the right of that property, so to the west, is actually not zoned downtown zone. So the State Farm
How is it zoned?
residential existing. So it, the State Farm is the last zoning for downtown zone. I cannot find, you would think that would have been included, but it wasn't. So the Planning Commission actually came to a consensus to deny that rezoning request. Now, Mrs. Long was not here at the original hearing, so she may have some comments.
Did we have one or more, as I recall,
There...
residents who spoke?
Yes.
Who shared a concern?
We had two, at least two.
Okay. All right. We do have, we do have Ms. Long here. Yes, ma'am, would you like to, any comment or? Could you step up to the podium?
I just have, Cecilia Long, I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions. That's the house, this is the attorney's office. This is 207 Cross, which is being granted rezoning. So I'm not sure that I understand why we wouldn't be, why it would be a problem. We have a person on our next level who has been from behind us, and we have a person right in front of us.
Okay.
And the other question is, I'm not sure that I understand, if they are residential, how is it that there's a business operating there and they're still leaving a sign outside?
This has been the case for how long, Heather?
It's been a history of commercial use that's a non-conforming.
Okay.
It's residential exception?
It's not that house, it's the property's behind us.
No, it's not.
There's an attorney's office.
That's Mrs. Raymond.
I remember that there was some concern about, there's a large parking area and that it could be turned into something that there'd be a...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I think that that's one of the major concerns that I remember.
And we were sympathetic to that.
Yeah. And the history of that small building, that used to be an ice cream shop. So it's been there, that building has been there for a long, the 50s at least.
What building are you talking about?
That little, that little attorney shop.
Is that a, is that a non-conforming use? Is that what we're talking?
I was, yes. Heather's saying yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You want to explain that? What that means?
Sure.
I think that's her question.
The non-conforming use is simply, there was a commercial use before that residential existing zoning was placed. And Lindy noted that it was an ice cream shop back in 1950s. You know, the first zoning was applied on the land in 1951. So if it didn't comply at that time, the property just became a non-conforming use. And it's existed ever since. So it's a...
It's never been residential. It's my village.
Oh, hi. How are you?
It's never been residential use.
Right.
It was just grandfathered in.
Heather, can you explain what happens to a non-conforming use if it remains vacant?
Sure.
And how long, it could remain vacant before it becomes no longer a non-conforming use?
Sure. After a one-year period of time that a use would not be operating in there, any commercial use, they would have to comply with the residential existing zoning. So if there was no business in operation for one year, then it has to revert back to residential existing.
I'm sorry, and what was the problem with the parking again?
Apparently, there's a large area for parking area to the rear of your property. And because of the enumerated uses in the downtown zone, there was a concern that the property could be used as a restaurant or a retail store. And given the proximity to the neighboring properties, there...
Are you talking about the parking lot right in front of us? The downtown parking? No.
But she's being penalized for that.
The one behind my fence that attaches to the restaurant and such. Do you know where my fence goes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you were to look straight on the property, it's on the right-hand side where my fence sits. That parking lot back there.
Like the upper decks?
Yes.
I'm not sure that I understand why that has to do with our house.
Not, it's not a parking area now, but there's an area for parking. I guess that's a better way to say it.
I'm not understanding.
BJ's here. Okay, oh, I didn't remember. Let's call her up.
So to clarify, to clarify the question and give you somewhat of an answer, the issue...
And she and BJ is also here. She spoke to this last time.
Okay, do you want to take it?
No, not really. But I do want to say what my concern and I think...
It'll be helpful. Go ahead and come on up.
Come on, BJ.
Yep, well...
Let her finish.
Did you want to finish, or did you want to get?
They have done a wonderful job with that house. It is just...
They truly have.
But I do have a concern that that is one of the bigger, larger properties in town that can be developed. And if it goes into the downtown zone, as you all well know, there's a number of things that could go there. And they have the ability to put a large parking area. Unlike the Bakers, which only have very few spaces. They probably have maybe enough to have their, you know, what they have for their parking. They cannot have a large, intense business there. That's why I did not have any problem with that. This property, it's a beautiful property, but if they wanted to put in a restaurant, then they would have to develop it and put in a large parking area. And they can do that in the back, which would back up to the two properties there. So I guess my concern is, I would not like to see the residential zone be any more eroded than what it is. We have a good neighborhood there, and I would just not like to see any more residential.
I recall some of these points that you shared last time. Councilman, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just for the commission's knowledge and the record, the historic records of the Planning Commission clearly shows, the original intent or the intent of the downtown zone was to redevelop downtown to eliminate things like setbacks, which allowed the wonderful buildings we have next to us. As the downtown, the discussions took place amongst the Planning Commission and subsequently at the council, when the downtown zone was first developed, there was great concern that the downtown zone would expand. And the consensus of the Planning Commission back when the downtown zone was first developed was, this was to allow our downtown to get redeveloped, not to expand the footprint. So my, you know, my point here is, if you go back and look at what the Planning Commission has done historically, and what the council did at the time was establish the zone to allow downtown to develop, not to expand it. If you were to, for example, allow this rezoning to take place, now you're running right next to a residential area. And this is against what the Planning Commission historically has done with the downtown.
Okay. So there's some continuity and consistency that's already in play?
Absolutely.
And that continuity and consistency is correct.
Right, and the Cross Street property is right on the parking lot. I mean, it's right on the public municipal parking lot.
Just our way.
They're right on it.
Well, I just, I just wanted to, first, I want to make sure, did you get your question answered? And then second, I was gonna ask the question of why, what is the urgency to go to downtown zoning?
Okay, two things. One is the parking lot that... He's talking about, it has nothing to do, I mean, it's, our department, I guess, that will be used will be the one across the street, which is the downtown parking. I don't know why they're parking behind the house. But the reason why we were trying to do downtown zoning is because the street has a painting company. They're generating zero traffic. He just doesn't want to, we thought that it would be nice to be able to do it based on how tight.
Okay, so you want to turn the residence into a business? Is that the intent? Okay. Thank you. I just want a clarification, what was the urgency to do that?
You can't apply, you can apply for a sign. You can...
There's stipulations set in place, or we have no intent of putting a parking lot in there.
Right, I think, I think the concern is, is that regardless, one of the things this body has to take into consideration for everybody here is that when we change the zoning, even if the current resident says that, I don't plan to do this, as soon as you're zoned that way and you sell the property, if you ever sell it, the property is zoned that way. Therefore, the next person in, moving in behind you can do whatever that property is zoned to do. Okay, so we have to take that in consideration for any and all zonings that happen anywhere in the town.
I was saying you could apply for a sign.
If he just wanted a sign for his business and it wasn't?
I'm not saying it would be, I mean, you could apply for it.
He could definitely submit for it, but residence or business advertising in a residential zone is not permitted.
Okay, someone recently got one on South Main Street.
Yes. Exactly.
That we approved?
Yes.
That we approved.
Not long ago.
That was for a special exception.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying that there's something, there's a mechanism. I'm not saying whether it'd be granted or not.
If they have a special exception to operate, yes.
At least in part, it sounds like it might be responsive.
Right.
You know, to what you would like to try to accomplish. Okay? All right, cutting to the chase, commission members. Is there any change in your... Is there any change in your response to this request? Before, there was a consensus to deny. Is there any change in how you feel about it?
Nope.
All right. And so our consensus remains the same. Okay? All right, so that takes care of the request for downtown zone. We have one industrial, we have one neighborhood professional, and all the rest are community commercial.
Let's do the industrial.
And we have an R three, yep, there it is.
You have one I, two MPs, one R.
Let's do the I.
What's that?
Industrial. Okay.
Yeah, we still have to go over it, right?
We've already, all right, let's clarify on, um, the industrial on Backacre Circle. And then we could do R three, and then the rest would be.
Wildwood Park and then go right into the commercial.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Heather, let's, uh, let's speak to Backacre Circle.
Okay, and I do not have a corresponding slide. It, it doesn't involve any property, it's simply bringing the proposed roadway into Backacre Circle into the industrial district because it was bordering, um, the adjoining R two district.
There was a small little sliver that we had already talked about for the road.
Maybe twenty yards, thirty yards, just.
Yeah, it, it was very benign.
Okay. Is there any, we, um, we achieved consensus to grant that request. Is there any change in your, your feeling about that? You still in support of it? Is there any comment from anyone here in attendance tonight?
This is Backacre Circle, there was a small section of the road that was zoned as a, uh, I want to make sure I say this correctly.
It was an R two.
An R two, and the whole rest of the area around it was industrial, so that small strip of road that is just the road itself, we're saying zoning industrial, so it's contiguous between all the way around. It doesn't make sense to have an R two piece of property for twenty yards of road.
But there's no change.
There's no change to the road or anything like that, it's just to make it contiguous for the property.
This is right at the end of the road, right beside, adjacent to where they have built the, uh, the training facility, medical training facility, that's what we're talking about. So it's, so it's a, it's a continuity thing.
I do have a question about that. Why, why does the water then increase from seven fifty to fifteen forty-four? If it's just.
It's just the zoning of the road, so going from an R two.
The zoning allows, uh, no tick.
If it were a house, if it were a house, yeah, okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
This is, this is right behind the, the Mannerie College Center.
Yes. Yes, ex, right there. So this is simply a transition for continuity. All right? We're good there? And we remain, uh, in support of consensus to grant?
Yes.
All right, yes we do. Okay, then, let's go ahead and address Wildwood Park, Section Seven. Or do you want to do South Main?
Let's do South.
We have a consensus.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get the ones with the consensus down first.
We have a consensus to grant, okay. Let's do thirteen oh four South Main.
Okay, that's.
Dr. Cappuccino.
There you go. This property should look familiar to you. This property was approved for a non-resident special exception. Um, a plastic surgeon's office and a med spa currently operates out of there. It is located along South Main Street and, um, is bordered also, um, by Caldwell Drive, which is a private drive. The owners, um, have requested a zoning change from RE residential existing to neighborhood professional. Neighborhood professional was, um, ad, uh, was adopted as a new, a transitional commercial zoning in the last, um, master plan update. It is our least intense commercial zoning. Um, the hour restrictions are Monday through Saturday, not past eight P M, I believe it is, and very limited uses, um, financial uses, professional services, medical, dental, and legal, um, residential uses related to professional offices. Um, and there is a two thousand, um, two thousand square foot, um, building footprint that's allowed. Um, so very minimum impact. Um, and the, um, is Helene, are you here? I can't see anybody. Helene Taylor, one of the, the co-requesters, um, I, you know, it is again confirming her request for this zoning. In July, there, um, there was a consensus to grant this.
Commission members, are you, is there anyone here who wants to make a comment with regard to this property and this request? Have you changed your position or your opinion in terms of your consensus on this?
Nope.
Do we still feel the same way?
Yes.
Yes.
And we do.
Okay. And then, um, I trust that you would want to move on to Three Caldwell Drive, Chairman?
Yes.
That this request was submitted by Ms. Yvonne Gosnell, who lives, uh, directly west of the property. And, and this property borders, um, the thirteen oh four South Main Street to the rear. She's currently residential existing and she would like, um, the opportunities. And she is, um, surrounded, um, in a sense, by some commercial activity. Um, across the street to the south is Dr. Miller's, uh, medical practice, which is a nonconforming use. Um, and then of course she has the medical use in front of her. And the property, um, to the, um, it, the, uh, on the corner of South Main and Caldwell, owned by Mr. Baker, is zoned NP, neighborhood professional. So Ms. Gosnell felt it was appropriate to request neighborhood professional for her property as well.
Okay.
And there was a consensus to grant that in July.
Is there anyone here who wants, who wishes to make comment with regard to this property or request? All right, commission members, do you still feel in support of this request?
Yes.
You still feel like consensus to grant?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, and that remains the same. How about, um, let's, um, for, for the seniors who've joined us tonight, why don't we step into Wildwood Park Two and Eight Oh Six Park Avenue?
Seven, Part Seven.
Part Seven.
Okay. Do you want to start with Wildwood Park Seven?
Yes, let's do.
Okay. Um, Wildwood Park Seven has been requested by Mr. Michael Berman, um, owner, um, and operator of Cana, um, MB Canterbury LLC. The current zoning of the property is R two low density, and he's requested a zoning of R three medium density. Um, he has applied and been approved for a special expect, special exception use for the development of sixty senior condominiums, um, as, provided he's successful in obtaining the R three zoning. And the R three, um, medium density essentially allows three units per acre, um, under the special exception. That, um, the special exception for senior condominiums, that density is increased. Um, I think it's maximum of twelve, twelve units, Mr. Berman, per acre? Yeah, twelve units per acre. Um, and Mr. Berman has a few words to say, if you would allow it?
If I may, uh, Michael Berman, uh, four twelve Wildwood Avenue. I wanted to just, uh, maybe bring, if there might be some new members of the planning commission that might have come in after we had made our presentation with all the pictures and the.
Right.
Points of our development. So I just wanted to briefly go over, um, where we've been to date with the planning commission on this property. Uh, on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten, the planning commission recommended approval of this special exception for sixty senior condominium units in accordance with the staff report, that the property was to be rezoned to R three. Uh, consistent with the staff report and the planning commission recommendation, the Board of Zoning Appeals conducted a public hearing on August thirty-first, two thousand and ten. And after the posting and, um, a notice of all our neighbors, they granted approval of the senior housing community. And I think there was some language in that, uh, when they gave us the special exception, that it was consistent with the master plan of a medium-density residential in the, in the comprehensive plan. Again, uh, one year after the Board of Zoning Appeals approved the special exception for the medium-density residential, uh, one year later, we weren't able to move ahead. We went back to the same board and they granted us a thirty-six month extension for the medium-density residential. Since then, um, the, um, the, during the public hearing process, the proposed land use was publicly and extensively scrutinized and found to be appropriate in this location. It's a natural complement to the existing single-family age-restricted residential housing in the immediate neighborhood, and it is consistent with the overall completion of Wildwood Park, which originated many years ago. It offers low maintenance, compact senior condominium units at a scale that's economically feasible and filling a void in the local market. So this property in question then was shown on the Mount Airy Designated Comprehensive Land Use Map in the two thousand and three master plan as medium-density residential. Uh, and, and we feel that we're here, um, really due to the map, when the zoning map was prepared, it was not consistent with that two thousand and three, uh, comprehensive plan. And, and so in closing, um, you know, we would hope that the planning commission look at the master plan and, and see that on pages of fifty-three to fifty-five of their master plan, that this, this land use is consistent with the, the master plan. And, uh, it, it is an infill project within the town limits. And we feel that its approval, you know, would complete Wildwood Park and be in the best interest of, uh, Mount Airy. Thank you.
And, um, I don't want to get this on you again, like I just did. I just wanted to, oops, oh heavens. Okay, this, this is the existing Wildwood Park community, right here, that zoned R three. And then this is the Wildwood Park Seven that we're talking about. It's the, the five acre portion, so, just to clarify.
And there is a, there's a Section Six. Is that also adjacent to this area and perhaps not totally complete yet?
Right, Section Six has fifteen lots that were beginning construction in August.
What, what do you anticipate or project as the ETA on that?
Uh, we, we think the build-out would be anywhere from one to three years.
Do you anticipate that would occur before Section Seven?
Certainly.
Okay. Yes, sir, councilman.
Heather?
Yes, sir.
R three?
Mm-hmm.
Maximum, maximum density R three is three units per acre.
You're exactly correct.
Five acres here, you've got.
No, if you go to the special exception for elderly housing and condominiums, it allows you to increase the density to twelve units per acre. And that would be found in one one twelve sixty-two.
One one twelve twenty-six.
Yeah, one one twelve twenty-six.
And then D is density.
So that's the basis for the higher density.
Sixty-two.
Right, that's R three, but where's the increase? I don't see exception for she now.
Okay, hold on.
One sixty-two.
While they're looking for that.
I got it.
Okay.
One one twelve And then read that. And.
One one twelve sixty-two. Special exception.
While they're looking for that, do we have any, any individuals who came tonight who wish to speak or comment on Wildwood Section Seven? Just, just thought I would ask to see. I have one gentleman, all right, if you want to go ahead and get in position, we'll be ready for you here in just a minute.
Would you just put your little.
Sorry, we had a little outburst.
I just agree.
Heather, um, I think you're short, you're, it's one one twelve.
Okay.
Sixty-two twenty-one.
Wait a minute, wait, that's for detached. I think, is there someone ready to speak?
Can I, can I ask a question of Dr. Berman first?
What's that, Jennifer?
Can I ask a question of Dr. Berman?
Of course.
Um, I'm, my question has to do with the border of the southern part of the property. Is that touching the right, the public road right away? I can't really, you know, all I have is this.
I, I believe the, uh.
Not, not that road, the town road, yeah. Does your property go all the way to, to. Adjacent to the town.
It, it's adjacent to Maryland Route Twenty-seven.
But it's not adjacent to the town.
Is there a property in between?
Between Maryland Route Twenty-seven and us.
The bu, the buffer to the left, there's a road there.
Right there.
Ridge Avenue.
Ridge Avenue.
Yeah, we, we front Ridge Avenue.
And do you know how wide your front is?
Sixteen.
Not, not off the top of my head, I mean.
Relatively? Ten feet?
Relatively, uh, I'm sorry, on the order of two hundred and fifty feet maybe.
Okay, what, what's the square footage of that section there on the south end?
Four point nine one acres.
All right, from a, from a coverage standpoint, how much of that would you need for this, this phase?
Well, there, there, uh, the proposal that we had for the, uh, site plan, there were three twenty-unit buildings.
Okay, and they'll all be on the same level?
Well, actually, there'll be two that are lower down that you would see from Ridge Avenue. And then there'd be a third one is, is maybe ten or fifteen feet at a higher elevation. But it, it doesn't go all the way up to the corner, it, it probably ends about here.
Okay. And what would be the timeframe ideally you would project for this?
Uh.
If, if Section Six for completion is one to three years, what do you see for this?
Longer. I mean, it would prob, we would probably try and do it in a phased situation. And if we could get approval for the first phase of twenty units, we could go ahead and begin and, and build the first building.
So you would, you'd be willing to do it sequentially?
Yes, sir.
Because, Michael, the, the plan is for three buildings.
Right.
Okay.
So. Okay. I, first I'd like to apologize to Heather because it was sixteen, not twenty-one.
Thank you, I apologize for giving the wrong section, I was under a little pressure.
The, the question I'd like to ask is, it says twelve units per acre, as you highlighted. Um, but some of the setbacks and then also the maximum building coverage says twenty-five percent of the total lot area. So that means you can only have the condominiums on twenty-five percent of the five acres? Is that accurate?
Yes.
And is that going to be adequate enough for you to put sixty? Okay.
Because it's three, three buildings.
I'm thinking with roads and everything else that you'd have to put in for parking and all.
Councilman.
Um, I mean, sorry, the real question is, if you grant him R three, that's just that you grant him R three. Anything else comes later, you got to go through a special exception process.
Right.
So this is really a request for R two to R three.
Correct.
He, he already has a special exception request.
Right.
But he would have to go, he would have to take that concept plan and take it through this body to ensure that he meets all the requirements of one one twelve dash sixteen, one, one one twelve sixty-two, number sixteen.
Right, so I guess, sorry, what I'm really asking is more of a legal question perhaps to Tom. If he's already has, he has some sort of exception granted under an R two zoning.
No, he was granted, as I remember, and this is a couple of years ago, as I remember, he was granted a special exception that would be applicable for the R three zoning, but conditioned upon his getting rezoned, as I recall it. Now, remember, that occurs at a time when frankly we thought that this master plan was just about due to be completed. As it turns out, that, that didn't quite happen, but that, that's technically what occurred, as I recall.
All right. What, we, we have a resident, Roxanne, who wanted to make a comment, but I bet she's going to, I bet you're going to offer us a clarification. Good. We appreciate that.
This time I'm speaking is Roxanne Hemphill, Chairman of the Board of Z, of Appeals. Uh, Tom is correct, is the way that we did.
Okay.
Uh, rule. It's the way that we did rule on his special exception. It was providing that the R3 zone was given.
Okay.
So...
All right. Any other clarification there? All right. Sir, if you'll identify yourself and share with us as you wish.
Well, I'm John Weaver from Wildwood Park, President of HOA. And our concern in the park that... Well, I'd like to know if you start a permit, I mean, get a permit to build 150 houses, is there a time limit on that? Or do they just build and then they decide to stop and then four years later, they just start up again? Is there a time limit issue?
Right. Heather, you want to speak to that?
There is no time limit, and I think rather than a permit, you're asking for a subdivision plan?
Whatever.
Right. As long as a certain percentage of the plats have been recorded, which Wildwood Park 6, that plat has been recorded with those lots, we... There's little or nothing that the town can do to require any acceleration of building out those lots. Tom, you can...
Really, it could take 20 years?
It could. There would be nothing that we could do.
Is that bad planning to have something like that? Or is that the way it is everywhere? Or is that just Mount Airy?
I think it's market-driven. I...
Mayor, do you have a clarification?
I do. And I know exactly what Mr. Weaver is referring to, and I understand the frustration as I've met with the HOA. And we are going to look at, it was actually market-driven, as she says. I don't think it was a conscious decision not to develop. I'm pretty sure he would want to develop, but the market drove the lack of development. So we're going to research if there's any kind of mechanism for us to move forward and finish some of these things that are unfinished as a result of lack of development. And we understand that normally, it doesn't work that way. Normally, developments go through. Communities get finished. In your case, this is a special case, the community is not finished, and it's caused a lot of pain within the community. So we're going to see if we can find a special mechanism to get some of these items taken care of.
Mayor, is Mount Airy unique in this regard?
I don't know that we're unique in this regard. It's the economy tank.
Okay. Jennifer, you...
From my experience in other counties, this is not unique to Mount Airy at all.
Jennifer works for Washington County. She's a transportation engineer and on the staff there, so...
You know, another concern is, when these people bought in here, they said they're going to have a park, and half of these people won't even get to see the park at the rate they're going. It's a big mound of dirt. The only thing happens there is people walk their dogs up there. Now, he's put a light up there, you can see he's biking, and then there's some paths, but nobody, when you're 80 years old, there's not many people going to walk up a hill. Excuse me?
That's not right. They shouldn't do that to you people. Not for you.
Well, anybody else for me?
Okay. Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
I have a comment.
Let's keep this under control. If there's a comment that you wish to make, we invite you to come up to the... If there is a comment you wish to make, approach the podium. We will keep this in an orderly fashion. Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir. Any...
That's about all I got to say, that it's...
All right. Mayor, another comment for you?
Again, to John's point, and it's good. Get it out here on the public record. It's very fine. I know exactly what you're doing. Monica's actually, that is part of the let's get it completed process. We're going to need to work with Mr. Berman and see what we can do to speed things along, even though it's not part of the normal process. And Monica's been working on that. We have several issues we still need to patch in the community. But again, you're doing the right thing, representing your neighborhood, noting the deficiencies, our deficiencies that you know. We all support you. We're going to work to see what we can do to resolve that issue.
Just one other thing. There is a runoff area where... What do they call that?
A swell?
Sediment control?
Yes, sediment control pond.
Okay. The sediment control pond is a pond. It's deep. The drains are blocked up. There's mosquitoes there. And I was down there today, and it's getting stagnant. There's scum all over. And you look at these other areas, like down below the post office, they're nice and neat. They've got cement there, and the drains, the drains aren't blocked. You know, it looks good. But where we are, it's a mess. A real mess. They cut down a huge tree the other day, and they must have taken out 5 more. I don't know why, but it's... One neighbor looks at it, and here's this great big tree right at the end of her property. So...
Yeah, again, did that tree come down, Monica? I just received that tree...
There's 3 trees came down.
Well, that one finally came down. This is more of an HOA issue than a zoning issue, but again, I applaud you for coming forward, and we're working on every one of these issues to make sure.
Thanks. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for bringing those comments to us. Sounds like there's some opportunity for further discussion and consideration with your development.
I know. I mean, I just want to follow up briefly to say, if this... If Part 6 isn't being built, why are we moving forward with Part 7? I mean, even if it's market-driven?
Well, condos are different, though, from single-family homes. I mean, they're elderly people who could use... Would rather have a condo.
Is there demand that we know for the condos?
There is no, the condos are out.
I know, but is there demand that we know?
Apparently.
We've talked about this before, and we thought it was...
I was wondering if Mr. Berman would want to speak to it.
It could be a resource for the community that we don't have now.
I just thought you might want to address Mr. Weaver's point and that why you're moving on with Part 7 when Part 6 is not completed.
What do you feel is the justification for moving on with this particular type of residence in Section 7 when 6 is not finished?
Well, we've been working on this project for over 13 years. When we began working on this, nobody was even in Wildwood 6. It was happening concurrently, I believe, with Wildwood 5. And a note from Mr. Weaver, wherever he is, you know, we applied to the Soil Conservation Service of State of Maryland, a fellow by the name of Brian Snyder, to ask him to approve a change of sequence so that we could go ahead and convert the sediment pond to a permanent stormwater management facility over 2 years ago, and he did nothing. He did not approve it. Carroll County was very supportive. Mount Airy was supportive, but the state Soil Conservation Service stopped it. So...
But it didn't have anything to do with the drains stopping up there.
He had everything to do with it.
He did. I didn't see Maxi working on it and covering up the drains.
Right.
Well, the facility is used as a sediment trap according to the approved plans until all the raw dirt is covered over, and then we would convert it.
Mr. Berman, these are issues I think that should be addressed, perhaps you with, you know, with the residents, and they in turn with the town. Let's speak to the overall request here for rezoning. Let's come to... Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah.
Quickly, please.
I have a question. When you all decide upon these rezoning requests, how do you consider traffic, the results of traffic? 60 additional homes sounds like a significant amount to me, and so how do you factor in the traffic?
If we feel it warrants it, we will require a traffic impact study.
Okay.
But in the process, just to answer your question a little bit better, this is just for zoning of the property. It does not conduce what building or is going to be put on there at this time. They actually have to come back with a building plan, and that involves traffic studies and impact studies for environmental and everything else. That's part of the process.
This is just the front end.
This is just property. That's it.
Just the request. Okay. We ready to get some closure on this?
Yes.
When we have discussed this in the past, we thought the asset of this type of housing, senior housing, would be advantageous to the community. Personally, that's still where I'm coming from.
That's where I'm coming from. Are these... These are for sale, right? Not rentals? Is that correct?
These are for sale. These are residences, are they not? Is it not rez or not rental units?
Our proposal is for 60-unit condominium building.
Condominiums?
For sale.
For sale? Okay. And are they less expensive than the single or the somewhat detached?
They would be.
So it will offer additional and different housing choices for seniors. Would they be priced at a lower price point than the single-family residences?
Right. We're calling the villas that are... We're getting ready to complete the final phase. Wildwood 6 would be 15 lots, and those houses probably would be around under 300. And the condominiums would be closer to that 200 price point.
So maybe a third less? All right.
It's 55.
55 plus?
55 or over.
Okay. All right. The Chair would entertain a motion?
I'm waiting for Tony. Are you waiting to read? Are you good? Good? So I will make a motion to accept Wildwood Park 7 as proposed from going R2 to R3.
Is there a second?
I second. Okay. Go forward.
The motion has been made and seconded that we accept the request to change the zoning for Wildwood Park Section 7 currently from its R2 designation to an R3. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And it passes. There is a consensus, and it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And again, this is just the beginning of the process. This is simply a response to the initial request. That's all. Please come to the podium, sir, if you would. And we'd like to hear it, but we want to be sure we...
I'm Bill Stancliff. I live at 1019 Yawston Way, not too far from that pond.
Okay.
And it's getting worse with the insects for the people that live 2 houses down from me. They're having gnats and other critters on the screens that they can't even see out. But the main thing is the beavers. They're cutting those trees off on the hill. And eventually, that hill is going to come down into the pond, too, if it's not fixed the way things are moving. I'll be dead and buried before it's fixed.
Mr. Berman, where are you? Mr. Berman, could we have some assurance that these concerns will be addressed and responded to?
We received a letter from Carroll County reflecting the concerns of the Homeowners' Association that the county has said that, you know, we can change the sequence. If Brian Snyder approves this change in the plans, then we intend to try and convert this pond before the end of the year. Those are the current plans. To get in there this summer, and we would remove the sediment and the mud that is currently in that pond, and then it becomes landscaped, and there should not be any permanent standing water.
Before the end of the year?
Yes, sir.
That's an accountability that you're taking on?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Monica, do you have any updates on that? You've also been reaching out to the county.
Carroll County's sediment control requires that conversion. They are trying to get the sequence of construction approved so Mike can go in and do it. I don't think it has to wait for the end of the year. That's my personal opinion. I think we can discuss some of that. And considering all these problems with the beavers and the insects that are causing the animal health, I think that it does.
So can we move forward at all new haste to make sure this is taken care of? I mean, that's part of the issues we're working on, but reinforced here again tonight.
Well, I mean, it's causing more problems all around.
Yeah.
Because there's just tons of growth, there's tons of animals and predators there, and that's causing problems.
Well, we know that, but I just wanted to tell you, you have reached out and talked to Carroll County.
All right.
Let's stay on top of that.
The beavers. Beavers. Beavers within the town limits. Who would have thought? Okay. Can we move on to... How about 806 Park Avenue?
Okay.
Dr. Michael O'Brien, operator of the Mount Airy Health Center at 806 Park Avenue, has requested a zoning change to CC Community Commercial, which at this current time is the most intense community commercial zoning. A broad range of uses, a broad range of special exception uses would be permitted within the CC zone. At this time, there are no hour restrictions. It does have setbacks and buffering requirements from other dissimilar land uses. But again, that is our most intense form of commercial. Dr. O'Brien is operating the healthcare, Animal Healthcare Center as a special exception use, and I know that he does have a presentation this evening.
Chair, I'd like to say one thing. I personally know the O'Briens, and although I have no financial interest, I will recuse myself.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. O'Brien, do you have a presentation tonight? Could we ask you to be as brief and as summative as possible?
7 minutes and 40 seconds?
Very long. Is there anything different than what we've seen before?
2 or 3 of these people haven't even heard.
Dr. O'Brien, let's keep it at 5.
I'll rush. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss the rezoning of 806 Park Avenue to Community Commercial as part of the current Master Plan update and the comprehensive rezoning. My name is Michael O'Brien, and with my wife Nancy, we live at 806 Park Avenue, which is located across the street from the post office at the corner of Park Avenue and Route 27. Before the town zoning laws existed, this property was used commercially as an auto repair shop specializing in studebakers and as a masonry and landscaping business. When I contracted to purchase this property in 1987, the front and sides of this property was surrounded by cornfields, and a mature hardwood forest was covering acres of land south of 806 Park Avenue. From the 1970s, starting with the construction of the Route 27 bypass, this property has become surrounded by community commercial uses to the point that it no longer fits any practical description of a residential property. The corner is now the second busiest corner in Mount Airy, with movements approaching 20,000 cars and trucks speeding by daily at 50-plus miles per hour. Now those cornfields are gone. Instead, 806 Park Avenue is across the street from the town's busy 24/7 post office and kitty-corner to a gas station, convenience store, and the commercial Twin Arts Shopping Center. 806 Park Avenue is across the street from the busy carnival grounds with its ongoing diverse business and community activities drawing large groups of people. And 806 Park Avenue is only 300 feet south of the newest designated Community Commercial Beck property that would be at the intersection of Center Street and Route 27. 806 Park Avenue is also located in the hub of activity caused when the acres of trees south of us were clear-cut to make way for the high-density Wildwood Park senior development, along with Lori in a 62-bed nursing home and with 94 assisted-living apartments. Our property has become surrounded by such widespread commercial uses to the point that it's simply no longer suitable for raising a family on such a congested, noisy, dangerous corner. In the audience tonight is a town resident, Commander Superson, who will comment on the public safety concerns of this corner. Resoning 806 Park Avenue to Community Commercial responds to vast citizen support for more shopping, small business, and employment opportunities. Mount Airy residents have said in 2 separate surveys that they overwhelmingly want more shopping and additional employment opportunities. They have said that they want the town to be more business-friendly and to increase the town's tax base via more small businesses. They have also asked for growth to be concentrated in existing commercial areas. Teresa Shattuck is a town resident who co-authored with Chairman Butts and Erin Tunkel the most recent town survey. She believes that rezoning 806 Park Avenue to Community Commercial fits perfectly with the town residents have requested. Ms. Shattuck is here this evening to offer her support for the zoning change. Our third reason for requesting this zoning change of 806 Park Avenue is that it matches the town's plans to consolidate and concentrate businesses to best use existing infrastructure. The Master Plan itself encourages commercial growth utilizing areas with infrastructure already in place. Before closing, I would like to make 2 comments regarding our immediate neighborhood. A petition against rezoning 806 Park Avenue was presented to the town in 2011. and eleven. This petition stated that our request would rezone all properties along the south side of Park Avenue. This inaccurate theme continues today and can be found in later letters of opposition to our efforts. This statement misled the signers and is inflammatory to the whole neighborhood. Let us say again, our request has been and still is for one property only. We believe the planning commission has the mandate and tools to use such as step-down zoning, just as it did on south end of Main Street and East Ridgeville Boulevard at Route Twenty-seven, to ensure that the quality of life on Park Avenue remains, and to finally put an end to these fears. This petition also said rezoning would create uncomfortable living conditions. In the Wildwood Senior Community located south of Eight-O-Six Park Avenue, only one property is physically adjacent to us. When it was built, this development was shielded from Park Avenue properties by distance, height, and a swell, creating a buffer of common ground in between. We feel the impact on this property has been and would continue to be nonexistent, considering our commercial-use veterinary clinic was in operation before Wildwood was built, and it has had no adverse impact on any resident's quality of life or their property values. I'd like to emphasize this point. The residents of Wildwood have lived next door to our commercial-use veterinary clinic since they moved in. Our veterinary clinic has coexisted within the neighborhood for twenty-five years and has had no adverse or negative impact on anyone's quality of life or their property values.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Another misleading point in this petition said such rezoning would create a chaotic traffic situation. Park Avenue is already a high-volume street due to these existing high-density senior residences, the post office, the library, the senior center, the nursing home, and the town swimming pool, park with concerts and activities, the childcare center, and it's a pass-through to Main Street. And it is very important to note that the next stated phase of development that's already been discussed in the Wildwood community is for multi-story, sixty-unit condominiums. If eventually built, these condominiums will bring drastically more traffic and congestion for the seniors and this neighborhood than anything located at Park Avenue. I got a page and a half.
I think we have enough, sir. I think we know where you're going. Are there any residents who came tonight that wish to make comment? Okay. We'll ask you to come up one at a time. We'd simply say this, let's not reiterate the same points. If someone has made essential points that you wish to make, okay, speak to that very quickly. But in the sake of time and to give us appropriate balance of consideration for each of the remaining rezonings, we need to limit this entire topic to no more than about twenty more minutes.
I promise. Hi, I'm Sheila Pyatt, seven oh five Park Avenue. We've lived in, well, we'll be living in Mount Airy for thirty-six years. We've lived on, we are living on Park Avenue for thirty-one years. When Michael came, approached our block through our neighbor, indicating he wanted to open up a vet center, we obliged him. We signed a petition. We let him open up. He went to the Board of Appeals, and he was granted a special exception, with the understanding that whenever he closed, retired, moved, it would go back to residential. I have in this folder for the people on, you know, planning and zoning, from that meeting at the Board of Appeals going back to when he opened up, the minutes, the petition spelt out exactly what the terms were. As far as Park Avenue, it still is a residential area. We brought up our children there. There's an infant now. There's a young toddler on the block, so it is definitely still a residential area. The only change to the area is the townhouses were built behind us, Wendy Knowles', and the senior complex, which made it even more residential. So I don't see anything commercial. There is nothing commercial on the block. If he became commercial, he keeps indicating that he would be the only one. Well, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to know the neighbor would come in and request and do the same thing, and there you'd have Park Avenue Plaza, just like you have South Main Street, Eliano Plaza. So that would be what would happen. I have a letter here from Bob Woodward, who was the chairman of the Planning Board of Appeals at that time, indicating what the situation would be when he closed. As far as the seniors, they are very, very concerned because if this is granted and eventually all the other houses become commercial or whatever they want to be, they would have a hard time reselling their house. We have a couple of them right now that are really in health situations and are really concerned about if this happens, who will buy their homes? They butt right up to it. So...
How many seniors are here tonight who have a concern about this topic? A show of hands. Would you continue to raise your hand if what Ms. Pyatt is sharing with us is a concern you personally feel?
I'll see. One hand going down.
No hands going down. Everybody put their hands down. Are there any seniors who are here who are in support of this rezoning request? Okay?
I just want to add one thing that really quite disturbed me. When Councilman Everidge referred to this area as a transitional neighborhood, a transitional corner, this is definitely not a transitional neighborhood. It is a residential neighborhood, and it always, I hope you, you know, will keep it. So, thank you.
Are there other people here tonight who wish to speak for or against this rezoning request? Can we see a show of hands?
One minute.
Bet. All right. Let's hear, let's hear from you next. One, two, three. I think we saw hands. Go ahead. Come up, please.
My name is John Superson. I live in Mount Airy in Scotch Heather Avenue. I'm a police commander in a neighboring jurisdiction which encompasses Mount Airy. Briefly, I want to say this, I drive to and from my work every day in my mar car going through that intersection. I can tell you right now, with twenty-five thousand vehicles per day, that is no longer a residential intersection. That intersection is conducive of many vehicles going in excess of fifty miles an hour, traveling through to and from that intersection in Mount Airy. My only question is whether the fact that way back when, when we talked about that residential area, back then, it wasn't twenty-five thousand vehicles going a day through there, going fifty, sixty mile an hour through that intersection. My consideration is to ask you, would you want your children or anyone playing out in the front of that yard of that intersection? That is the last portion of that intersection, of that four corners, which is zoned and deemed to be residential. If your answer is no to this, you know, I can safely say that, I would be safe to say that Eight-O-Six Park Avenue is no longer deemed to be residential, and it should be considered as possibly commercial on that due to the fact of the thoroughfare of the vehicles going through. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next?
Good evening, Jack Taylor, Walden Way in Mount Airy. I live with my family on Walden Way here. I am a traffic reporter for WTOP in DC and Baltimore. I talk about twenty-seven on a daily basis. I fully understand the issues of safety, noise, congestion, and accidents that are associated with the high-traffic areas. The corner of Park Avenue and Twenty-seven, the corner of Park Avenue and Twenty-seven fits all the descriptions that I know of for an extremely busy commercial intersection. As the trooper just stated, twenty-five thousand-plus vehicles traveling on that per day, it certainly isn't suitable to be raising children on property at that intersection. As a result, I strongly support Dr. O'Brien's request to change his zoning from residential to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else?
One more.
One more, and then Teresa.
Hi, Robin Buckmeyer, nine oh four North Main Street. I just wanted to say... I'm sorry?
Did you say nine oh four North Main?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, we should keep business in areas that are currently being used as businesses. Three corners of this intersection have businesses already on them. The remaining corners should not be residential. It should be, the zoning should be changed, and that's okay with me.
Okay?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Teresa Shattuck. I own a small research and evaluation firm right here in Mount Airy on Main Street. And I want to talk a little bit about the studies that were mentioned early on. There was a study in two thousand and eight. One of the primary results of that was to support and attract...
Excuse me, Dr. Shattuck.
Yes.
Can you briefly summarize your comments?
I was gonna...
Okay, all right.
I was intending that. So we did, there was a two thousand and eight survey, and two thousand and twelve, there was another survey. We determined that there were five things that citizens wanted, and among them was to attract and support more businesses. When asked a series of questions, and we, in our second, in the two thousand and twelve study, we talked to well over a thousand residents that ranged in age from about ten to ninety-nine. And we asked all sorts of questions. When asked, should Mount Airy attract more businesses, fully, sixty-seven percent of kids said yes, and seventy-six percent of adults. We then asked, we really wanted to pry and understand what we wanted. So I'm really talking about the citizen's desire to support and attract small businesses and businesses in general. But we asked a series of questions that nearly a thousand people responded to. How interested are you seeing in Mount Airy attract more small businesses? Ninety-eight percent. Attract businesses and maintain minimized traffic? Ninety-five percent of people responded that they wanted that. Be more business-friendly? Ninety-four percent. Attract businesses and keep the small-town rural feel? Ninety-four percent. And provide more support to businesses? Fully ninety-three percent of residents said that they would like to see that. And I am fully in support of supporting Dr. O'Brien's request for the change in commercial.
All right. I think we have... Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. And then you as well, sir? All right, good. Good.
I'm Caroline Rickerson. I live on Merry-go-Round Way, which backs up to Park Avenue. Dr. O'Brien's property does not face Route Twenty-seven. We all hear the traffic from Twenty-seven and have lived with it very successfully for many years. His property faces Park Avenue. If the survey that was done was done of the residents who live on Park Avenue and around, I suspect it would be the same, except it would not apply to Dr. O'Brien's property. It would apply to a commercial environment, not to our environment. You talked about the heart and soul of the master plan, and I think the heart and soul of a town is its residents. And the residents live in that area. It is residential at the present time. The post office is not twenty-four-seven. The post office is quiet evenings, and it is quiet on the weekends. It is a difference.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is David Thaler. I'm President DS Thaln Associates, which is an engineering and planning firm in Baltimore. I'm a fellow of the American Society of Civil Engineers, a fellow of the National Society of Professional Engineers, and for the last five years, I've been guest scholar at the University of Baltimore School of Law, where I teach land use. I just want to touch very briefly on sort of the zoning considerations. You've heard the views that over the last twenty-five years or so that the O'Briens have been at this corner. It's gone from a bucolic residential corner to a very high-traffic corner. At least in my opinion, this is no longer suitable for residential on this particular property. The other three corners are used for commercial. But Dr. O'Brien has asked me to speak about one issue that still may be troubling the board and was certainly, I think, of some concern the last time I was here, and that is the issue of the volitive covenants. Dr. O'Brien has entered into an agreement to enter into restrictive and protective covenants with seven of the neighbors, including the owner of the shopping center and the owner of the post office. There's been an assertion that protective covenants with respect to zoning are either illegal or invalid. And it is true that a municipality, of which Mount Airy is, cannot enter into protective covenants. That's called contract zoning. The Court of Appeals has held that that's illegal in Maryland or invalid and enforceable in Maryland. And the Court of Appeals has held that you can't contract away your police power to a private party. You can't inhibit your police power to a private party. Zoning is part of the police power. You cannot contract that away. However, protective covenants with private parties with respect to zoning are very much valid and enforceable. I could cite you a hundred cases in Maryland for Mr. McLaren, the town of Attorney, Middleton Realty versus Roland Park Civic League, one ninety-seven, Maryland eighty-seven, Atlantic Second, two hundred. I could cite Oak Lane v. Duke, one ninety-six, Maryland one thirty-six, seventy-five, Atlantic Second, thirty, Millard v. Berry City Property Owners Association, three ninety-three, Maryland, six twenty. A whole series of, really to go to your point, if the property owner says, I'm not going to have no plans to do something with my property, how can you keep the next person who buys it from doing that? And the way you can do that is with a protective and a restrictive covenant. Ms. Dickinson?
I have a question about that. If the people that have the contract with Dr. O'Brien, if that person moves and somebody else buys their house, then they cannot enforce that contract, can they?
It runs with the land.
So that contract does run with the land?
So that contract becomes enforceable to their heirs and assigns, and it runs with the land.
So the people, not Dr. O'Brien's land, but the people that signed the contract with him, it runs with the land with them?
Yes, ma'am. Sir.
All right. So I'd like to clarify one point in all those cases. Are any of the instances enforceable by the municipality, the city, the town?
No.
Et cetera? It's only by the individual as well as their neighbor?
It's by the neighbors.
It's a matter between those individuals.
Right. The seven people who are on the other side, and you can enter, and you can enter into a homeowners' association if you want. And they're in, you're correct, they're completely enforceable...
To be clear, the town would have no involvement in...
The town has no...
Right. So the individual, the other parties to the contract would have to choose to sue if the purchaser did not comply with the covenants, the restrictive...
But you'd have a lot of trouble getting a loan, you know. Let's say you, let's say you wanted to go to...
I was just asking.
I'm sorry? You have to choose. Dr. O'Brien has entered into a covenant with two commercial owners who presumably would have the financial wherewithal to do that.
Right. But they would have to choose to do so, right?
They certainly have to choose to do...
And if they don't, then it is incumbent upon all the other individuals that his property impacts, whether they want to sue him or not.
Well, only the seven people, seven properties would have the right...
The seven people who enter into the contract have the privy.
Right. No other, no other party would have any right to enforce.
We have done this many times to solve these sort of issues with other jurisdictions.
Including the planning commission? If a site plan was submitted to the planning commission for approval, the planning commission would not have the authority to enforce the covenants, and therefore would be required, if all other reasons point to approval, to approve that site plan.
Well, that's true, but the circuit court, the circuit court would, and the neighbors would take the appeal, would take an appeal into the circuit court.
I don't think, I'm not sure we're comfortable with that.
Okay.
That solution and that approach.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
This covenant that you're talking about, it has to be recorded, and it's in the deed, correct?
Well, right now, there's an agreement that if the zoning passes, the covenants will be recorded.
Okay, so it's in the deed?
Yes.
If I don't, and I'm one of those people, if I'm one of those people, and that's a covenant that's on the deed, a deed restriction, my house is going to be not easy to sell?
No, it's his house.
No. The house, the land, if I'm in one of the houses...
One of the seven.
No, you're not following, ma'am. The covenant restricts the O'Brien property. Okay? And the right to restrict that on the O'Brien property runs to the other seven people. But the restriction is on the...
But there is a covenant in the title on my property?
Yes, it's a right.
All right, very good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
No, I was just going to make a comment about the covenants, that the covenants that I've seen and the individuals have signed off on, which I have multiple comments about, states clearly, and everybody's probably read this, that it won't have a gas station or a convenience store on it, yet it doesn't cover any other type of commercial use whatsoever. So I want to be very clear that that covenant that was agreed upon was for only two specific instances.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nancy O'Brien, and I live at Eight-O-Six Park Avenue. I just want to state for the record, for the people who don't know this, and for the commission members who don't know it, we do, we spend a lot of time talking to many, many people in town, and we receive, we receive very positive comments from the vast majority of them. We have distributed to the commission, and we can get them out to anyone else, that we have more than three hundred letters of support from other residents in the town for this property to go commercial, and we just, you know, we didn't ask them to all come out tonight, but we do have those letters of support, and I think all of you should have copies of them by now.
All right. Just for the sake of, someone else? If it's a fresh perspective.
Well, I hope it is. It's my home you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
And I live in Wildwood Park. My name is Kay Mulliken, and I feel very strongly that this is a lovely community. It's safe. And do you know how difficult it is to find a safe place to live when you're a senior citizen? This community has opened their arms up to us. We have been very comfortable, and I think we are very good citizens. I think all these things are important. I think all these things are important and that you consider, that you shouldn't take away from us what we invested our home and our life into. And I feel very strongly that it should remain residential in all areas. It's just a very good place, and I don't think there's any other place in Maryland that offers the security you offer us.
Good. You, sir, will be our last comment.
My name is Bob Robish. I live in 801 Mary Go Round Way. My property backs up to Park Avenue, and we're about properties around 250 feet from the O'Brien property. Mrs. O'Brien, I guess it was, just stood here a few minutes ago and said that she had received a lot of support from the town of Mount Airy. I just want to alliterate that over the last two years, there's been a number of inventories and signing of items to reflect that the majority of the people who live in Wildwood Park, senior citizens, are opposed, strongly opposed to this change in zoning. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
No, I want to finish this. I want to ask something for the purpose of clarification. If there was a way to strike a balance, essentially, this property is operating in a neighborhood professional kind of a way. If there was a way to strike a balance, to recognize the effort that the O'Briens have put into this, and to enable them to be rezoned if they choose to request it, and that convey to anyone that they might sell that to, it too could be operated as a neighborhood professional rather than a commercial use, how many of you would find that acceptable to live in this neighborhood?
Maybe Heather should clarify a neighborhood professional. Clarify what a neighborhood professional...
I understand.
It's too large.
I understand. But I'm simply asking to see if there is a distinction between a continuation of the way it's being utilized now versus a commercial utilization. That's really what I'm asking. There's a clarification. Yes?
Just let me say this. If we, the people that originally allowed him to come, if we would have known this was going to happen, we never, ever would have done it.
Okay.
We learned a lesson. So let me tell you, people, when somebody comes and says, "Do me a favor," don't do it.
Never mind. I'll withdraw. I'll withdraw the question.
I have a quick question. Sheila, while you're standing up there, you said you had documentation from the Board of Appeals.
Could we get a copy of that?
Do we have a copy of that, please?
Yes, I do.
Can we? I do not have that. I do not... Do you have a copy you can distribute to us at this time?
If we just have one, we can make copies.
Yeah, we'll make copies. And Councilman, you got a question?
I made a big deal out of looking through the files and the boxes.
If you have it, we'd like to make a copy now so we can look at it.
Okay.
While that's happening, Dr. O'Brien, I have just a couple of quick questions for you. Maybe it'll clear some stuff up. How many employees are currently working where your location is?
I work there now. We have one person part-time.
So you have two plus one part-time? Are you planning on expanding your staff?
Not at this time.
Okay. How many parking spots do you have on the property?
Don't hold me to this, but I think 12 or 13.
Okay. And in your, in your own words, how are you proposing to take your property and group it into an attractive manner with all the other businesses and residents in the area?
Yeah, I can devote you...
Sure, please.
Our reason for asking for community commercial zoning is threefold. None of the other...